Okay, we're gonna be opening up the City of Taft Planning Commission meeting. Regular meeting of Wednesday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, here at City Hall Council Chamber. Two hundred and nine East Kern Street, Taft, California, nine three two six eight. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at whymayfield@cityoftaft.org. They may be made by phone to the city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before this meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. We will now begin with a pledge of allegiance which I will lead, and then will be followed by the invocation by Greg Haslow.
Ready and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Greg?
Thank you. Wise and loving heavenly Father, on behalf of each of us here today, I thank you for the gift of life and the abundance of rain that we've had this past winter. Thank you for the opportunity and the health to be involved in useful work for our city. I ask for wisdom for each member here tonight to carry out her and his responsibilities for the well-being of each that are served by them. I pray for peace in our streets and an increase of neighbor caring for neighbor. Last of all, I ask your blessing upon our families, our businesses, and our leadership in the name of my Lord and Savior Christ Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the point for a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Chairman, Orrin is absent. Vice Chair Livingston?
Present.
Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson is absent, and Commissioner Lykem?
Here.
Okay, item one on the agenda, citizens' request for public comments. I see we have no one signed up for comments, so we will be moving on to item two, which is the minutes of the meeting of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will need a motion and a second.
Before you do, Vice Chair Livingston, if you notice, it says March eighth, which is today, and that's my typo.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did say March eighth, didn't I?
But the minutes are correct with the proper date, which was February eighth, so.
So could somebody making the motion?
Say, specify the date of February eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that are actually for February eighth.
Second.
Okay, and we're doing this as a roll call vote?
Commissioner Lykem?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. Okay, passes on a three oh vote with two absences. We are now moving to a study session for the City of Taft Housing Element update for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one session. Mr. Staples, would you please?
Thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. I'll update that along with everything else where we could call it the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one program period, if you will, because the housing element is both an analysis of where we are with our housing stock, but also a re-analyzing of the programs we have in place or or goals and things that we maybe need to change as zoning ordinance and all that, so I'll update that name for our title here. But as mentioned in staff report, I have a little presentation before you today as we're starting to get into the meat of some of the changes and updates to the housing element. Attached to the staff report, you'll see there is only four sections that are being amended at this time. Six point one, six point two, six point three, and six point seven. And simply, it's the beginning of the document plus kind of the most important part, which is the land inventory in six point seven, which has a map and which will update, but a list of the available sites in Taft that the state's looking for, every city to document the vacant sites you have available. You start with that, but then if you don't have vacant sites, you go to developed and how you redevelop. But we have plenty of vacant sites here to meet our arena, our regional housing needs allocation number, which with this go around, we need to find property that can produce five hundred and four housing units. And let me go into the document here, and I have it up on the wall to hopefully follow through. So as I mentioned, we're looking at six point one introduction. There isn't much here. It's more of discussing where we are, where we're going. I do need to update whatever the current state policies are on housing. Keep in mind, this document has probably been revised, but has been in this structure for probably twenty years. So there's probably quite a bit of old terminology, reference to outdated state housing policies and whatnot. We've just gone through an eight-year period. And one thing to slightly revise, if any of you caught the city council last night, the annual progress report was accepted by the city council. They did ask a question about essentially the premise or what's driving the update. One, as Vice Chair Livingston mentioned to the council last night, it is the one element out of all the general plan elements that has a schedule to be updated. It used to be every five years. Now it's every eight years. And what it's more tied to today is actually the effort of Kern Cog and all the state cogs for the different counties. They do what's called a regional transportation plan, where they take everybody's land uses like these lists, and they figure out what growth projections will look like for population and housing and the like. Then it translates back around. That turns into that five hundred and four arena number that we got, the thousands to Bakersfield and the county and whatnot. And the reason why I bring that up is that the Kern Cog and the other cogs actually have to produce that plan every four years. So they produce two for every eight years that we do a housing element. So they're kind of our progress checker as well in the background of is the the transportation statistics they see on the roads out there and the work they're trying to do to work with Caltrans and the county and all that. What is it producing? And they get ready for the eight-year cycles of our housing elements. And this is the only, the second one of an eight-year cycle, so states always kind of changing the parameters of things, so that's where we're at with this. So with this state housing policy, I'm gonna have to go back and see if they've adopted something in the last eight years, which most likely they have. The downtown specific plan alone with the funding of that, I'm sure something in those housing bills that they passed probably changed the overall housing goals and policies, so this will be edited at a later date, hopefully by our next meeting. I could get a lot of this narrative geared more in the right direction of having it updated and going towards the future instead of probably echoing some past policies from the two thousands. So right now, a lot of this you see is not changed. I believe it's like on page seven or eight. Apologize for this. So it really picks back up on six point two, which talks about the regional housing need allocation plan. I did update the numbers for each of the income levels showing that five hundred and four total number that the state wants from us. And we will spend a little time today and discuss a little bit down here. So each go around, we need to assess what our current needs and future needs are. Let me run this up so you can see. So with current needs, that's something I want to hear from the three of you. If there's anything you see out there. More the same, really pushing on the downtown plan. The two I have here on future needs, which is beyond the short term, is more of encouraging more of the infill development in the center part of the city, because that's where a lot of our individual lots are from various demolitions and fires we've had and whatnot. And nothing's been rebuilt on a lot of those lots. And then the second one is still seeking affordable housing, but geared towards seniors as our current development off of Eighth Street is full. And we certainly have enough seniors and income restricted folks that would meet the senior age requirement that would probably benefit from another probably similarly sized project somewhere in the middle of the city, near the healthcare district or downtown. And so that's a future need, so. I don't know, Vice Chair, if you want to initiate any kind of discussion or comments on any more immediate current need on housing that you would see, and any other commissioner you could speak up as well, but I'll let the Vice Chair lead.
First of all, I'm gonna open up to you folks. If you think, if you're thinking of anything in specific beyond these two items, I'd really like to hear.
Yeah, mainly, I think some downtown condo, nice apartment type buildings is our biggest need. We got a lot of people that get out of school, get a job, need a place to stay. There's no rentals. Housing for that point in their life is too much to buy.
And kind of like the young professional that doesn't need property right now.
Guy get a job on a rig. He's making decent money. They move to Bakersfield, get a nice condo and, you know, something like that, but we just don't have that.
The ones on, the apartments on Finley Drive were probably the last decent sized complex that built, and that was.
Yeah, and that's only seventy to eighty units, I believe, there.
And those same people that would stay in those condos or apartments, in my opinion, they're the ones that's gonna walk downtown, have dinner, have a drink, watch a movie, do a little shopping. You know, if you gotta get in your car and drive somewhere, they might drive to Bakersfield, but if they can stay parked, you know, if they want to go have a couple of drinks and not have to worry about driving, they can walk home, and that's kind of the ideal people that are gonna be down there, the young professionals, very small, getting families, stuff like that, in my opinion. I think that would really boost our downtown.
Adding that mix into what we have here, because we have a good, fair amount of single-family housing, whether we have some infill lots or not, we have a good stock, and there's still the Sandy Creek Estates that are still have plenty of phases and lots to develop from their initial approval, so having that mix in downtown definitely would be good. Commissioner Lykem, did you have any more?
No, I think he pretty much nailed it with needing that downtown.
Yeah, I'm actually, you know, I've been pushing, had been pushing for the downtown plan for what, four, five years now? I think it is a key component. I think the important thing for us to remember as we plan is keeping in mind that the housing element needs to help us in some ways sell those developments to people who can actually do the development. I think we all know that developing affordable housing, you know, the low-income housing is a specialized skill set. And we, we as a community have people who can help get that done, who've done it before and worked with people to develop affordable housing, but looking to find people who might build that townhome in the eighty to one-twenty range is a different ballgame. And we have some advantages in ownership in the property and some other things. And I think that we need to, at least in some ways, have the housing element make that clear that we're open for development in some areas. It might not be the case where in the communities that I had worked in previously, most of them were highly impacted, and so really the concentration, even though they needed the same middle, an upper middle and what they called workforce housing desperately, and we worked with the City of San Diego to develop programs to try and get to that. We actually have the ability to do workforce housing in terms of land availability. Our issue is getting somebody to actually, you know, build it and find a way to make it a viable product. So we've done the first step, which was the downtown community, you know, the specific plan. The housing element, in my mind, needs to help sell. I don't know if sell is the right word, but at least make it clear that the city wants to develop both affordable housing to meet the needs of those who are in the lower end of the community and not rely on an aging stock of housing that is really no longer appropriately affordable housing when it's sixty and seventy years old and may not be, have a useful life that's worth retaining, you know. So encouraging things like Habitat for Humanity to do the, you know, the individual lots that we've been trying to do, and all that is important, but also finding the development potential for that move, first time home buyer, really, is what we're talking about. Either somebody who could move into a nicer apartment. You know, there was a time when you spent your twenties living in an apartment, building up your nest egg to buy your first home. Well, a lot of times, you wouldn't want to live in half the apartments around here that long to do it because they're old too. So there's opportunity there for market rate, both housing and maybe market rate apartments, and I think we need to find a way to sell that, you know, for not a better term.
More than the state mandated documents, see how to.
Yes, if there's a way to do more than that. I think sometimes the state mandated document gets ignored, especially by, let's say, merchant builders who know that in ninety-five percent of the cities, maybe more in the state, what they're looking at is a document that a government agency has been forced to create and has worked hard to make as honest an assessment as they can in some cases, not in others, and we all know that. Doing it either grudgingly or, you know, half-heartedly. We need to be able to say that we're doing this with a real goal towards having housing in this community. And we are not one of those communities that doesn't want housing. We actually want it, and we want to show that we want it. If that makes sense?
Yeah, I'll get into a little bit later when we get to the land inventory. I think one thing I wanted to do was possibly break up the land inventory into like things, so an infill table of land that's that way, and then sizable properties, a series of that, and then maybe a downtown-focused list of those properties, kind of segmenting how those arc is right now. I think the last go-around on the list, I did it basically, it might have been numerical order based on the Assessor Parcel Number from I can remember.
I think it was.
Or some with geography, east to west type of thing. So when I get, go deeper into that, I'll mention it in a second. I'll, maybe a little manipulation there where we can maybe post those segments of the housing element document on the city website, more on the first page of the planning department site or things like that, just to put that, a section that's probably useful out of the document a little more ahead, side by side with where we put the specific plan on the website and all that, just so it's, they don't have to click too many times to find the materials on their own. Or if I do have a phone conversation with somebody, go here, open these documents. We've tried to make it user-friendly and just go from there on what. That's an idea I've been kind of bouncing around as far as representing the available properties in town.
I think that's a great idea. The idea that we're kind of in a little bit of a cul-de-sac, and we have to find ways. It's the same thing with our retail. It'll be the same thing with industrial or anything else. We have to be a little more aggressive about pointing out the advantages of this community, and there are plenty of advantages. We just simply need to be more enterprising about it. And frankly, you know, in all the years I've worked for the associations, looking at a general plan, I kind of cruised through the housing element to look for the bad things that might be done to my people that I represented, more than I ever did to look for whether or not there was something good for them. And so we have an uphill battle when it comes to people looking at it, because our general plan does have a lot of really good pro-housing goals and policies and procedures in it, and I think we've done even better with the update to the zoning that we've just gone through and with the update to the downtown plan, so one of the places to help highlight that would be in the housing element. Maybe more than maybe somebody else might consider doing so.
So excuse me, I know I'm still pretty new to the commission. I got a lot to learn. So, and I'm sure you guys do in some aspects, but what do we do to like promote our city and try to get investors and developers? And I know we've gotten some recently, and that's great, but I'm just, I don't know how we do it, and I'm sure you're much involved in that, but what's the process?
Well, I'll try to keep it as brief as I can in that what you're referring to and what we've been able to encourage development-wise is definitely all been on the commercial side of things, so from the Jack in the Box, Taco Bell, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Grocery Outlet, all that. And that's done through the trade shows, if you will, for the commercial realtors and the reps for those different companies, so your Grocery Outlets and Starbucks and Jack in the Boxes have a West Coast rep that covers Washington, Oregon, California, whatever it may be. So we've been going to those shows, meeting them face-to-face, in a sense professionally bugging them year to year, making sure they know Craig Jones is still city manager, Mark Staples is still the planning director, where your contacts. And then they kind of, enough years pass and they do enough research on their end to finally give us a real call, and we'll start working with them on what the process is to get before you for approval and building permits and all that. On the housing end, normally there'd be somewhat of a similar process, but unfortunately, what I've found in Kern County is there isn't a similar availability like there is on the commercial side. One thing that, one entity that tends to be in different corners of the state and probably nationwide is a Builders Industry Association, a BIA, or a Home Builders Association. There technically is one in Kern County, but it doesn't seem very active or to be a resource to connect to home builder A, B, C beyond the home builder we have currently. So that's been a difficult thing for me to find, to do a similar outreach like we've done on the commercial side. So that's another goal of ours, is to figure out who those contacts are here on the southern part of the valley. What I've started to glean is that I think we have to go all the way up to Fresno County. I think every single builder, especially all the ones that are in Bakersfield, most of their home bases are in Fresno, if not outside of the Central Valley as well. So, so I don't think going to any of the model home complexes necessarily would help because you have mostly the real estate salespeople there. So Craig and I will have, city manager and I will have to start digging more locally and see what connections we have locally to figure out how to connect to the more valley-wide builders. Because there certainly are ones that build from, you know, Stockton all the way down, that's kind of their region. They probably don't go to LA or the Bay Area or things like that. But it's not as obvious as the commercial side has been of like where to go, who to talk to, things like that. So that's been more of the difficult side of it. We've had some of the builders come and talk to us. They look for the next suburban or slightly rural area to find forty, eighty acres that they can put another subdivision of A, B, C home builder company. But they haven't followed up, so we've mostly had Colson Construction. We did have Freedom Homes for a while. That was building a lot of things Kern County-wide. But I think it was twenty fourteen or fifteen, they either finished building out what they had and just sold them or sold them off to people as rentals and whatnot, and they left Taft. But, and nobody's filled their gaps since, so it's kind of a rambling answer. I apologize on that, but it's, the commercial developers have been a far easier, you know, where to go to with it. In the typical areas for the residential side, I'm not seeing a Kern County equivalent or even South Valley equivalent to go to as a resource.
He's also got another difficult thing to deal with, which is that if you're if you're building commercial, a lot of times there's one guy for a huge region that's handling Seven-Eleven, he's handling Bargain Outlet, he's, you know, Grocery Outlet, whatever. He's handling these, whereas almost every major builder's division has a land act guy. And so each division will have a land acquisition guy whose job is to acquire land for that division. And you might not ever find him if you don't know who he is. Maybe he's got contacts in, say, C D Richard Ellis or Cushman Wakefield, and so it's a little more Byzantine to try and find your way into the guy who acquires land for his company. And I'm not sure the rules are as, I bet Mark can give you a sort of a sense of like how many thousand people a certain kind of retail needs, you know, to even consider coming to a community. I'm not sure that you can find the same rules for how many lots a particular builder needs in order to consider building. How much does the land value need to be? So it is a much more difficult process, and that's why I think this is taken. But that, and frankly, we didn't have the tools, the downtown community plan, the update to the zoning, and I think the housing element provide tools that'll make it easier, so.
Yeah, and it definitely helps that Colson Construction did build the forty-eight houses they did there. They finished up the last like eight or so homes down on Amber Street, kind of at the southern part of the city. Freedom Homes did finish their houses, I believe, in twenty fifteen and sixteen, which was on Pilgrim and Sunset over there. So there should be enough new comps, if you will, because I'm sure there is folks in each of the home building companies that would utilize that because it was a little too quiet or silent in twenty fifteen when we were trying to reach out because those homes weren't building and selling, but with a good seventy or so homes sold that were new, ground up, hopefully that will actually help someone that would look our way. We just need to find at least a land acquisition person with each of the companies, and that's just kind of the difficult person to find. I have kind of built, built up a little bit of a network in Fresno of people where I could maybe knock on their doors with an email or whatever I gotta do to find that, but it's been a more difficult task than it has been on the commercial side. So, but that's definitely what we'll be doing moving forward to see if someone wants to take a piece of what's left of the Sandy Creek Estates and, you know, provide a, you know, three or four different product styles of housing that can go in there if they're willing to sell. And then we have some other pieces of land available, and then we'll figure out how to find the multifamily builder for the downtown plan. That's gonna be the tough one because those are fewer to find, and they're not building as rampantly as the single family. You kind of see the single family and then the really dense stuff that goes into the bigger cities that are looking for a couple hundred units, you know, four or five stories high. If you've been to, you know, even places like Anaheim and those mid, you know, hundred thousand to three hundred thousand person cities throughout the state, they're getting a lot of those, kind of four or five story ones. Kind of four or five story ones, um, but the uh, kind of average size that we would get here. Uh, it's a little more difficult to do, there's fewer of those developers, but um, if we start seeing. Movement like we saw out on the west side that uh, all white apartment complex, it's uh. Right on Stockdale, um, um, we'll see if there's more of those showing up, um. You know, the city and or county and the residents being more willing to permit those, cause I do recall seven, eight years ago. Snooping in on some of the planning commission meetings and there being plenty of comments of people. Not wanting those kind of apartments near them kind of thing. And uh, it, developers were having a tough time getting some of their multifamily projects through. So uh, when we start seeing more of that building in Bakersfield, it's more likely all of us suburban cities will start following suit once they see. That better path of getting their projects approved in Kern County as a whole, so it's kind of.
I mean, that's a good example, though, they're building those buildings and as they're getting done, all of a sudden you're seeing gas stations and. And I think if we got one, say just one, one nice apartment complex on Rails and Trails. And it set the example, people could see like, oh shoot, like now downtown's coming up. Until where like the smaller lots might be harder to sell because you can only do say a fourplex. But now the value is gonna be more. Because, okay, now downtown's booming, more people want to be down there, it's more popular, those will sell, you know, or rent easier.
Yes.
And I think that feeds into a little bit of how I thought, was thinking of maybe restructure, structuring that list and breaking them up into light groups, you know, really small lots where you can only. Get a duplex to a fourplex and then side, uh, the downtown might get its own. Focused list where uh, you know, you could get ninety here, a hundred and twenty here, that kind of thing. So I, I think that, that's definitely uh, echoing some of that.
And then I think the, the last, one of the other tend, tends to be an impediment is that. Um, developers like to work where they've worked before.
Yeah, they're comfortable.
And um, you know, Mark can tell you that his, his work with the, the developer who's put in the commercial. Stuff recently, the, the um, O'Reilly's and the Dollar General, all that. He had a great experience, which is why he's put in three things and if he finds the right. Client, he'll put in some more, but those are fairly short term projects, a commercial. You know, maybe a year, year and a half, uh, a residential developer could be there for five, six, seven, eight years.
Finish up a track.
And so they, they also tend to be a little more. Uh, squeamish about what kind of relationship they're gonna have and so, again, putting together good documents. It kind of projects the image that you want that guy to see. Which is that it's stable, it's had a good government. Fees are not outrageous, the, you know, the time to get through, all that. So I'm, I, I'm confident that you're heading in that direction and I'm sorry if I've taken longer than we needed to, but we can move on.
I'm learning the process, so that's why I'm like, we almost need like a, not to sound this way, but like a salesman to go out and. Hit people up, do cold calls. Envisioning, you know.
Get your own broker.
And part of that, in kind of transitioning into the next section of six point three, which is uh, reviewing the prior element. In the program section, we definitely can uh, come up with some of our own very site specific programs, you'll. Uh, focus here, focus there, um, we do have some other programs that um. Uh, these are all from the prior um, element and elements. Uh, where we did have uh, program one, we used to have a housing rehab um, program. Um, it, it wasn't quite as popular as a first time home buyer. And a lot of people weren't necessarily qualifying, we'll reevaluate whether we still pursue, pursue this. But I'm just uh, have a summation from all those annual progress reports that we've done the last seven or so years. Of how many um, uh, homes that we completed in the past. And then uh, also the state um, likes to make sure we have. Uh, public information programs, if you will, making sure everything's up to date, who their resources are, both for us here at the city. And beyond, cause there are kind of regional housing groups beyond Habitat for Humanity, there's the CAP-K group and. Um, the Kern County Housing Authority and some other nonprofits that help with housing programs, so having. Public information available um, helps with that. Probably our most successful um, housing program was our first time home buyer uh, program, I think we had close to a dozen. I think of uh, thirteen. Over the last seven or so years, about two or so a year. Uh, unfortunately, from my understanding, the um. The grant program that's the basis of all the funding has uh, discontinued this for now, but again. Will be re- um. Re-reviewing all of these programs and seeing what the newest version of something is, it could be from, coming from another source or whatever it may be, but um. Um, we'll have to look at what housing assistance availability is out there, um, statewide and then locally to the county. Uh, zoning warrants review, that was more due to, cause we just finished the uh, general plan and zoning updates. There were some inconsistencies, so it was kind of an easy program to insert there, where we got the um, densities aligned. Uh, cause somehow they got a little uh, askew, um, as we went through that prior recession and staff changes and whatnot. So that's why there's a whole lot of changes there, it kind of explains some of the uh, ordinances adopted and getting things straight there. Program five, the multifamily housing project, that was back when we had the representative that was trying to help us out with Rails the Trails, he did submit in twenty eleven a. Uh, apartment project, uh, at a fourth and supply rows, little forty, forty-five unit. Uh, family affordable housing development and he only got to the planning commission stage of it and never really got a. Developer or a uh, um, a management group that could uh, manage a um. Affordable housing project there, um, so we'll have kind of a different multifamily project, similar to what you mentioned Commissioner Dowden. Um, and look at multiple areas to target, um, and not just have kind of a singular site that seems successful at one point and. Let's see if it works out and didn't quite work out, so we have our downtown specific plan now, we can definitely piggyback off of that. And focusing for, for some multifamily projects. In the future, uh, the land use element update, again, that was, we weren't quite um, out of the uh. Lawsuit we were in with uh, Sierra Club uh, last time, so again, that was with the zoning ordinance review to get everything lined up. And both documents finished uh, uh, with the appropriate densities and maxing out um. What we could get from different developments in the R one zone, R two zone and R three. Then we have sustainable communities, we uh, uh, adopted a climate action plan. I've been trying to get uh, Cal Poly San Luis Obespo students to take it on as a project to. Updated, bring in more current, what are some more practical? Things that cities are doing for uh, energy efficiency and what, and. Climate friendly uh, activities or conditions we could put on some projects. Cause we kind of got a somewhat boilerplate-ish uh, climate action plan, but it'd be good to have something that's a little more uh. Targeted and uh, what could be done from single family home development to commercial development. Cause it is intended to um. Expedite the secret review process, we haven't had a lot of sizable projects that needed that review. Um, so what are some things that make it a little more friendly to um, continue getting the, these developments in commercially? And if, hopefully some of this multifamily stuff downtown and I'll be. I'll probably be soliciting each other, cause I think I just got a updated email where it's for this coming fall. When we have students coming in, uh, studio projects and whatnot and see if we can get someone to uh, take on uh, and update of that. Uh, the next program was code enforcement program, it was more of just trying to limit ourselves to no more than two demolitions a year of any kind of housing. Um, we pretty much stayed true to that, I think there was one year where I think we demoed four, just cause it was kind of a. Unfortunately, a high fire season or uh, one home took down two, or one fire took down two. Uh, situation, but all in all, I think we uh, met that pretty well. Um, and then uh, programs nine to ten, fair housing and information again. Uh, our city clerk who doubles as our um, uh, grants administrator and uh, pushing whatever um. Housing programs we have, she maintains all of that information and will uh, re-review everything again and bring it up to date for the next element. Program eleven, senior housing project, again, we just discussed this a little bit to find a. Uh, second site, probably something of similar size to the current um, senior apartments we have on Eighth Street and uh. Um, see if we can get more folks that qualify for that into uh, some good quality housing and. Um, hopefully they're not too over their head and wherever they're at, if they have a limited income, you know, those that are um. Solely social security and folks like that, that would qual, pretty easy qualify for a. Uh, senior complex, but with only sixty some odd units at the current one we have, I'm sure we can take on another sixty and those would easily fill up.
Yeah, I think Heritage Park has been operating at capacity since they opened.
Like there isn't a need for it, you're right.
And my personal experience with other family members that live in one, it, it's uh. Uh, can be pretty limited no matter where you go, cause also these developers don't necessarily build a lot. It kind of takes a, uh, an effort to get them here and get the units built, so. Um, it, you'd be get, lucky to get one development every eight year element cycle if that. In a city our size and even this other smaller cities here in Kern County that are a little bit bigger than us, but. We definitely need it, um, the land is there, it's not too far from the existing one. We have plenty of properties not too far from uh, the, uh, new transit center development for those that need bus service. Uh, we have land that could uh, be near a pretty easy shopping in the downtown restaurants and whatnot. So, um, and then just with our transit system being more of a dial ride and can take them straight to the grocery store when needed. Uh, I think we have all the services that any place would need, uh, we just need the developer to provide uh, more units. Uh, on program twelve, um. Homeless services, we try to keep our homeless uh, information up to date, but um. We did try to uh, pair up with uh, the United Way, they were setting up a program in twenty eighteen nineteen. More in the metro area and I'm sure we've all seen the news stories of different. Um, shelters that they've been trying to build there. Um, there's been some interest out here to try to um, house the folks we do have here in Taft. But I think uh, um, that their makeup isn't quite like the folks in uh, Bakersfield where a majority of the folks we see walking around. Most nights out of the week, they do have a place to go, they just uh, find a way, I think, to get kicked out and. That's when we see them out on certain nights and whatnot, so. I think we're at single digits of those that are truly without a home on their own. That we would put somewhere so it, you know, one house, maybe two, if somebody did a small homeless shelter in a home, which is. Possibility, um, would accommodate those folks and then. It, it's just everybody else who does have a, a, a place to go, but they. Have issues staying under that roof for various reasons, so. Uh, we'll figure out what uh, um, kind of programs the state's uh, advocating for, what other cities are doing and. We probably would, will have some sort of program, but you know, our demand isn't necessarily there, but sometimes these programs are more of a. Be prepared for type of situation, whether it's minute, uh, changing your zoning code or um, when the time comes, uh. Those little shelter things we see up in like the Bay Area and LA, Bakersfield actually I think has one. Development, um, with the uh, small shelters, um, you know, there might be something there, so just be ready for it. Program thirteen, ADA compliance, we made changes to zoning code. Uh, as appropriate for um, reasonable accommodations for ADA compliance when needed, so we're complete there. Program fourteen, uh, infrastructure assistance, this didn't quite work out as uh, planned, but um, I kind of got. An update where we haven't had a redevelopment agency in ten years now, it's actually eleven, now that we're in twenty twenty-three. Um, they have tried to, the state legislature has tried to pass uh. Redevelopment like programs and from what I've found. There's two, there's the CRIA, which is the Community Revitalization and Investment Authority. Which is similar to a redevelopment board, a city or county can develop, then there's also the EIFD, which is uh. I'm gonna have to read it, I always forget these acronyms, um. Enhance Infrastructure Financing District and even the old redevelopment, one of the key things was to have a pool of funds. Grant and tax increment uh, financed where um, a city or county could possibly. Um, uh, reimburse the costs for maybe some uh, uh, offsite improvements, like a road, sewer or whatever. Or the city or county puts it in themselves or improves it themselves and then the development just needs to tap into it kind of thing. And the state took it away in twenty eleven, which officially was January first of twenty twelve. And unfortunately it was part of when they were having budget issues and um, it's never returned, these two programs are what have been uh. Uh, approved since and I think no more than twenty to thirty jurisdictions statewide have. Adopted either of these as a program, so there, we're also competing for the competitive grants and other um, programs to get. Uh, supplemental funding to the general fund here at our city and every other city and county. And remember there's uh, fifty-seven counties and over four hundred cities, so. And they're not even ten percent of the cities have adopted either of these programs, cause it's, it's sort of there, but it doesn't do the same thing and it's tough to uh. Recreate what used to be and um, we'll analyze this one as well and see if there's something else out there that the legislature's passed and. Or we'll come back with more detail on why either of these haven't really been that successful. You know, we'll go ahead and skip the other programs, it's in your staff report and I have uh, provided an update on. Um, these last items, we only had nineteen item, or programs in the last element, I think it was twenty-two. The time before, so that's why you'll see program twenty and beyond completely crossed through, cause we just didn't have uh, that many on this last go around. The last thing I wanted to go over, which I was mentioning before, is the uh, land inventory and. All I updated for you now, cause I, I don't know if you're like me, where I'd like to know the number first. So this is the old map and um, each property uh, outlined in red or the different uh. Uh, areas on the following list. And what I've provided here, um, is an update to most of it, you should have. Uh, plain printouts of this in front of you, which updates what's in the staff report. And if you want, you could go all the way to the end, just to, you know, ruin the ending for everybody like a good book.
Last page.
So the last page, if you see there, um, in the staff report, we were at. Twenty-two hundred, there you go. Twenty-two hundred and eighty-three possible units could be developed across um. Thirty-nine project areas or property areas, if you will. And it's all a mixture of single family, medium density, where you could build some duplexes or triplexes and then more intensive, um. Uh, apartment and condo type developments, we, the basic math got us to twenty-two eighty-three. The more plain list you have in front of you, if you notice, uh, site six on the first page is no longer there. It skips from five to seven and if you go down the list, you'll see some other site numbers have gone away. So most of those are due to either we've developed something else there in its place. Um, or uh, like one property was um, where the transit center ended up being built. At the time of developing the housing element at the time, that wasn't quite in the works or plans yet. So I still utilized it as a available property that could be redeveloped, everything but the. Um, oil worker monument and did the math on that, so. We have a number of properties and probably tens of acres that have come off the list. But if you look at the updated total on the last page. Um, I was able to do more math that's on the, than is presented in the staff report, particularly with the downtown lots. And even with the land lost and um, and the um. Sandy Creek Estates developed, so their uh, remaining lots are less and all that. We're still able to get at twenty-two twelve, as the available land can produce twenty-two hundred and twelve. Units, single family, medium density and high density, um, lots, so, or units. So, we're still at a good number where we're four times the five hundred and four number. That they're uh, the state and Kern Cog are asking of us as a um, number to aim for, for the next eight years. Um, so the good thing is we still have plenty of land, we're not needing to do any kind of redevelopment type stuff. Now, the other part too is I haven't even um, entertained the idea of how many accessory dwelling units we could possibly develop in a year. Um, so that'll be something that'll be added to this, probably, I'm not sure how to represent it. But it'll be some supplemental number, it'll probably be more, instead of a ratio of the overall numbers, it'd probably be like a, probably be one of our programs. Probably be one of our programs, like five ADUs a year per um permits issued for. And times eight, that's forty of our five hundred and four units could potentially be um. Through an ADU, cause they, the state does count the ADUs as a housing unit. Um, and I'll be, I'll be checking in with. The state housing uh and community development who reviews our element of. How do I represent it, or I'll probably find an example of a a a city that's already adopted an element in the last year or two. Um, but it'll probably be considered part market rate and part um affordable, cause some folks are probably gonna rent it at a reasonable rate. Some are gonna um rent it out at a higher market rate. Or it might end up being a Airbnb for all we know, but it's still a housing unit, however it ends up getting used, so. In addition to the twenty-two twelve, if we went down that road of just kind of off the top of our heads with ADUs. There's probably forty more on top of that, so we'd be at twenty-two fifty-two, if you will. Um, and but I'll be working with HCD on that of how we put it into the element and how does it get addressed. It'll probably be a a uh new program on that list that of stuff we've completed. The list shortens, we add some more programs to work on the next eight years. And I think an ADU program in addition to marketing ourselves better. And pursuing a multi-family project or multiple multi-family projects in the downtown. Is probably how this list will evolve into something more specific to project areas. But also where we could promote it more to uh developers and then ADUs are more. You know, pushing our existing uh homeowners and maybe the occasional flipper who's gonna fix up a house and. You know, add a unit off an alley somewhere, um, um. But this is kind of the main thing is uh making sure we meet this five hundred and four number. Um, and I I I wanted to know the number and I hope you wanted to know the number that we're still at that. Twenty-two hundred and change capability and actually. Looking at the map overall, I can already pick out some smaller lots where there's probably. A couple dozen more, I could probably squeeze onto this list to be more thorough with it, especially in the um. Central part of the city, I don't think I've quite captured every possible lot that's vacant out there, there's been a couple more demolitions where I. Have to add those on as well, so I think we're at a good number, at a good spot, and this is kind of the. Month one edit, if you will, that I've brought before you, so. I'll end there with the presentation, um, and I'll. Take any more comments the three of you have, cause so far it's been really good, it's gonna drive our public sessions. Uh, public workshops that we'll have with folks probably later this summer to get their input based on your direction, I might have something with the council. Might even uh put together an economic development committee uh committee meeting to drive, you know. Get the feedback from that group to uh uh get their feedback on uh housing uh direction and things they wanna look for as well.
Yeah, the ideas section might be really worth their input.
So, I'll leave it there and I'll entertain any kind of discussion you have beyond what I presented.
Any more questions from you folks? I do have one question, SB nine stuff we did in the fall, does it have an impact on this? In a way that would actually show up in numbers, or is it one of those things that? If somebody takes advantage of SB nine, it'll show up post-development?
I have a feeling more post-development, cause n- n- nothing here uh. Suggests that um someone would build two units on a regular single-family lot, which legally they can do now. Um, definitely wanted to push more of the ADU, um, just. Cause of scale, available room on the property, not too many single-family properties in Taft. Can really turn into a well-laid-out duplex, if you will. Uh, SB nine was kind of pushing, uh more full-size two units on a property, I would definitely recommend most. Uh, Taft property owners that have a single-family residence to look at the. Backyard or side yard of their properties and figure out how to put a smaller quaint second unit. Um, that fits more in the ADU form, but there's nothing in this assumption that. Um, does that, I might have to do or not have to, but to address SB nine's require or not. Requirements, but the change to planning law, um, similar to ADU where. A presumption, probably another program, a presumption that five property owners take advantage of what SB nine allows. And maybe we have, again, five units a year, four units a year.
That's what I was wondering, because I mean, there's no way to really. Given all the agita that came out last year, so far the impact has been statewide, almost non-existent. Um, maybe that will change, who knows, maybe some people will start taking advantage of it, I doubt it, because it's really. Not developer-driven, it would be individual-driven and so that the the most people don't even know that it's happened. And so, um, I was just thinking that. Uh, someplace in there noting that it's a ten, it's a potential source. Of no more housing, but it is an uncontrollable one. In some way, from the city, cause we're not forcing people to do lot splits, you know, but we're open. As required by law to do it, so there is some some unknown potential for increased housing based on SB nine or something like that.
And that's probably a conversation I'll have with HCD rep that will be assigned to our housing element to review. I'll probably take some direction from them or they'll probably refer to some examples, but it'll prob- most likely be a program of. Um, promoting or encouraging residents that are looking to increase the number of units on their lot to. Utilize SB nine allowances for that. Um, there actually is another bill that I thought was dead that survived that I'll bring up at a later date, but um. Similar to that where it encourages kind of in the middle of a neighborhood to have more units, so. Um, but anybody out there who has a single-family home, in a way, you're almost allowed two units without the SB nine law. Uh, if they recall with our ADU law, and it's a statewide law, one, you can kind of cordon off one. Extra bedroom in your home and that satisfies the uh uh junior accessory dwelling unit. Which is within the existing structure, less than five hundred square feet. So if you want just a simple room to rent that has more of like an its own exterior door for someone to access, that's. I'll leave it to HCD and the state to count it that way, but if somebody does that, we'll be sending that unit to the state when we report to them and. It's one more, and then the separate ADU I mentioned, so. In a way, without SB nine creating duplexes in the middle of single-family neighborhoods. People can already kind of get three sort of units onto the property, primary residence. The main larger ADU and then a little extra bedroom kind of walled off as a.
And I agree, I think most of our lots around here. Lend themselves to an 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 ADU, you'd probably have to tear the house down and start over, there are a number of. Places where that's been done in the center of the city where houses have been torn down and they put in a dual-triplex. Um, you know, a long thin one with a very long driveway that attaches along. You can do that, but I think you have to tear everything down and start over to actually get that done, as opposed to doing a any kind of real lot split. You just seem to do a single lot and do a an actual duplex-triplex setup.
Well, we did, um, in the report, if you recall, we did permit a uh home with an ADU attached to it. In the downtown area, one of our permits we issued in twenty twenty-two. And hopefully, when once that's built, it could at least be a basic example for others to. If they're wanting to buy an available property in town and do a similar. Where a property owner can reside in the main unit and kind of have that rental income thing that uh folks tend to. Promote ADUs for is you could rent it out to Taft college kids or a high school kid or somebody who's starting out in the oil fields or whatever it may be. Um, uh, so that that and also that that difference in scale as well, it just seems to work better having that primary unit. And having a small rentable second unit for personal use, if it's a family member or renting out to whomever. Uh, seems like it would fit better here, especially with a lot a lot of our lots having alley access. It gives a separate way to, so the traffic of the main home resident and the ADU resident, if they're different. You you know, could stay separate, so all the things that people might concern themselves with.
The training you sent to me Friday, there was a small discussion on, I think it's Clovis that was looking at, um.
They have a program.
With with alleys, but there's been some concern raised about alleys. Um, obviously, people know, who know where my house is, knows that we have a lot that would accommodate itself to a fairly decent-sized. Extra unit, um, and the alleys would probably accommodate it, but that's certainly an issue is is if you can accommodate it. And still not block the alley for services, it would definitely be an advantage compared to where I lived in San Diego, where there was no alleys.
Um, Clovis has a ADU program where they um did the thing where. Um, government agencies have gone out to designers and architects to provide some template, you know, two to four. Template units that are essentially pre-approved or you know what your fee, what it's gonna look like, the size. Uh, expected fees to pay for permitting and all that, but they just gotta go find that contractor that can build it for them. Um, and I went to one of their example sites uh a year ago. Um, and it was really well-done, I won't repeat how much it costs to build, cause I think it might deter people. Just expect with any construction, it's gonna cost, you're gonna put some money into it, it is just as long-term investment as building a single-family home.
You're gonna do undergrounding, you're gonna do some other things that you. Can't avoid.
And it's up to you to, um, you know, negotiate prices on everything from the lumber and other materials and whatnot to. Get it more affordable and all that, but what Clovis has done, they're real simple, real quaint, real nice units, they are, they're alley-loaded. Um, um, we're not require uh allowed to require parking spaces, but obviously people have cars. And I think they have a couple good examples up there where it's at least a paved area where the car can get all the way out of the alley, so there is no issues with. Trash pickup or whatever other issues there are, so Clovis is a real good example in the central valley of pretty effective uh um. Um, accessory dwell dwelling unit development, I'm keeping an eye on some uh grant funding out there that could possibly. Hopefully it could help, you know, maybe do more of the uh, you know, uh glossing up this document for. The selling it, like you said, but also if we can maybe even have our own um ADU pre-approved type. Uh, set of plans that are ready to go to make things easier for folks here and they can. Kind of one-stop shop, see if it fits in their lot and their property and and then go from there, but it's gonna take some funding to. Pay for the services and time of the architect or engineer that produces them and that's not cheap. So, but i- it seems to be pretty effective when you make it that much easier for folks to build them. So, we'll we'll definitely work on that and I might bring uh Clovis's example to a future meeting, so you can see what they've been doing.
Well, if there's no other questions, I think that's good for now, we're gonna be touching on this a few more times, I think.
Yes, throughout the year.
Um, thank you, uh, we'll be moving on to item number four, which is the planning director's report.
Um, just real simple, um, we will not have our typical first Wednesday of the month meeting in April, cause I'll be at a conference. We approved April's meeting to be the third week, so that's uh April nineteenth is our next meeting, make sure to jot that down. So we have six weeks to our next meeting, it'll give me plenty of time to get a lot more edits done on um. This housing element, to get it updated, get the table fully updated. Um, we'll see if I could get a updated map to show where all the lots are and all the ones I perhaps missed last time or they've become vacant. Since, um, but yeah, March nineteenth is our next uh meeting date and that's all I have.
Well, in that case, we'll move on to item number five, our city attorney.
Thank you, no statement.
Okay, any comments from our commissioners?
Uh, I did have one question related to the housing, the uh Habitat for Humanity House that's going up on uh Calvin, any? Any update on that, they put up a fence and a sign and I'm anxious to go over and help out, but.
Yeah, the word is, I believe they may have just found the family that qualifies for all that, so. Um, I think they did kind of have the house ahead of the family, if you will, um, in working with the city to acquire the lot and. Get permitted, but I believe they may have secured their family, I don't have any details on it, but.
And since we were talking about split lots, is that gonna be a split lot or is that just gonna be the house on that lot?
It's gonna be a house, uh, it's it'll, it should fit with everything else there, they'll they'll have an uh garage in the back as well, like the other homes and have uh. So whoever lives there will be able to park in the garage in the back. Um, it's, I believe it's thirteen or fourteen hundred square foot house, it'll be a little smaller, but it's a single-family home.
Didn't it have two houses on it at one time?
It's been vacant for, since I've lived.
Okay, um, any other comments from commissioners? Okay, I, just one, um, this is just in case anybody uh watches this on YouTube, this is. Your best chance to understand housing in Taft is going to be either watching or attending. The meetings coming up over the next year, the housing element is your best and your best opportunity to truly understand this. There was a discussion about that again last night on the city council. Um, and they were also concerned about that and I just wanted to reiterate that. If you wanna understand housing from the the point of view of the city. Then this is the uh the best way to get that understanding. Uh, identification of a representative to the city council, again, I have no problem doing it unless somebody wants to take a shot at it. Okay, well, I will be doing the representation to the city council, in which case all I need is a motion for an adjournment in a second.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye. Pass is on a three oh. Thank you.